I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for City of Yukon, Oklahoma, January 7th, 2014. Please rise with me for the invocation by Pastor Scott Kenny and the flag salute.
Pray with me. Father in heaven, we here so thankful we get to come again to start a new year here in Yukon. Father, we thank you for the great blessings and reflections we've had on 2013 and all that you've done in our city through our schools, through our government, the way you've watched over our people, especially sparing us from the great tornado. Father, we look forward to what you're going to do this year. God, I pray for our city government that's gathered here tonight. Father, would you give them blessing and Lord, give them wisdom beyond maybe their years of experience, so they might know what to do in leading your people, because as we know, government is one of the institutions that you gave to us. And Father, I'm recalled back to your prayer of Jabez, and Lord, I think that ought to be a prayer for Yukon this year, when it says, "Oh, God, that you would bless Yukon indeed in its largest territories, that your hand would be with Yukon, that you would keep Yukon from evil and that they would cause no pain." So Father, I pray that for our city. I pray, God, that this would be a banner year, and Father, we would see growth in every way, but Father, not only personally, emotionally, from the family, but also spiritually, God, that we would be all that you would have us to be. So we dedicate this night to you and all that's done. We pray this in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
This time, we'll conduct a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2014 Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the council regarding this matter?
Mayor, with this, we have a requirement this time to have people register that they were here for the public hearing, so I'm going to pass around a sign-in sheet they could sign in that would help us with the grant application, so...
And that includes us, too.
That's correct.
Very good. And that's whether they have something to address the council over or not, it's just the presence.
This would help us with our opportunity of proving the city.
Very good. Very good. This time, we'll conduct a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2014 Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department Recreational Trails Program grant. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing nobody at this time, do we have any presentations or proclamations?
No, sir.
Thank you. This is the visitors' portion of our agenda. If there is anyone here, a Yukon citizen, that would like to address the council on a non-agended item, a non-agended item, if you'd please come forward and introduce yourself. State your name and address, please.
It's Rick Caccini, 1140 Landmark Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I'd like to state that I am the curator of the museum located at 601 Oak. I wanted to come in and thank the city and city manager and all their folks for supporting us, and just to keep in mind that we are busting at the seams, so I wanted to make sure that you know that we're still getting things from the veterans from the surrounding area, so I want to thank all the veterans in Yukon and surrounding areas, so thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Do we have any other visitors that would like to address the council on a non-ag ended item?
Rick Hope at 1777 West Vanama, Yukon, Oklahoma. Don't you love Yukon? I'm telling you, it's the greatest place there is. I just wanted to say to the city of Yukon, thank you so much for the Christmas at the park. It took a small army to put that together, and it was the most wonderful park, I would say, anywhere, not only in Oklahoma, probably anywhere in the United States. But that's just what Yukon does. They put it together, put it up, take it down, but it always looked so nice, and there were so many people that enjoyed that, and I got so many comments on it, that it was just great, and I just wanted to tell everybody that was involved in that, which is a whole bunch of people, thank you very much for that. It was a wonderful thing. That's Yukon's best.
Thank you, Mr. Hopez. Do we have any other visitors that would like to address the council on a non-ag ended Seeing none, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council reconvene as a Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17th, 2013; B, payment of material claims in the amount of $281,576.77. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 2A, present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year 2012-2013 Yukon Municipal Authority audited financial report as prepared by Darrell S. White, CPA. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Darrell's here.
Yeah.
Darrell, would you like to take a few minutes and summarize this for us, please?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to get to do this audit again. I'm not going to basically go over anything really on the numbers, because there really wasn't any significant changes. Really want to kind of focus on three things. Number one, kind of where we're at today relative to where we were at in the past, and kind of how we're positioned in the future. And I think that it's easy enough for us to say that in every single aspect of the audit, we're better off today than we were when we did this last year. And I think there's a lot of, you know, I think all the way from Grayson, all the way to each one of the staff members, you know, should be congratulated on really being, you know, taking some ownership of the system and really putting together a nice system. You know, if you remember last year, we did have a couple of areas that, you know, were not necessarily concerned, but areas that we'd struggled with in the accounting system, and we significantly improved those this year. You know, as with any system, it's a work in process. You know, we're not perfect, but I think the thing that is real easy for me to say this year, that I sure don't know that I couldn't necessarily said with certainty last year, was that as we look to go into the future, and particularly some of the things that you guys have going on and a potential for growth, we have now positioned this position to grow and to be able to accommodate that, and I think that's a real important, you know, function. Our audit report was unmodified, that's what you want on all opinion units. You notice at the back of the report, there's a report on compliance and internal control, and we didn't have any material conditions or reportable conditions this year, either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, which was an improvement from last year. That's really all that I had to kind of say, that, you know, it's a pretty short summary, you know, but be more than happy to answer any questions that anybody had.
Do we have any questions for Darrell?
Would you enumerate the, you said you had, there were a couple of issues from last year, and you want to note those improvements?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear them.
The two areas, the two major, what we call transaction class areas, that we had some issues with last year were debt and fixed assets, and our central problem, it wasn't a major issue at the time we did the audit, because a lot of things had already been rectified by the time we got there, not really rectified, but addressed. And the big issue with both of those things was, and the system, a couple of years ago, had the ability for major issues to not hit the general ledger, and they relied upon really kind of human action in order to be picked up properly, and that was part of the reason why the, basically, the two-year ago audit had to be restated, you know, the debt issue that had got missed in that. And what has changed this year, in particular with both of those, is there's been significant policies at each step of the way. There was a real good job between the accounting consultant and city staff to really do a risk assessment of those areas and figure out basically what individual procedures, you know, could be put in place to change the system, and most of the things that could be done were done this year are in place. There are some things that, you know, that we're continuing to improve over time along those lines, but basically, if I kind of had to put that into a risk model, I would say that basically, in two years ago, our system and the opportunity for something major to get missed was pretty high. Last year was medium, and this year, we're moving towards the lower end. You know, we're not quite there, but we're getting close.
You use the term debt? Is that what you said?
Debt, yes. Yeah.
Tell me what that is.
The municipal debt, the long-term notes payable.
Oh, okay. That's what I wanted to know. Last year, they also made some mention of our current pension position as to where it was, and that although we were apparently in a whole lot better shape than almost everybody else around, we were indicating that they were going to try to improve that this year. Did that happen?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that's a fairly significant, you know, thing when we look at, you know, not just where you guys are at, but where you're at compared to everyone, you know, all the other ones. We are very close to being fully funded on the pension, and that would probably, and Grayson and I talked about this, you know, there's probably less than 5% of the cities that are at the funding level that you guys are. With the policies that you've got in place for continuing to increase the funding to that within probably, you know, a lot of depends on actuarial things, you know, what the market does, age of employees, a whole bunch of things, but it would be my best guess that within a couple or three years, we'd be at 100% and be in real good shape. And where I think that's going to really help you is basically their ability to borrow going down the road, because in 2015, all those liabilities, that's always been there, but they've never showed up on the balance sheet, start showing up on the balance sheet for, you know, for all municipalities. And the ones that are basically have significant unfunded liabilities could see significant changes in their bond ratings, and you guys are not.
You're actually saying to me then that that's on our balance sheet at the present time, or we're just taking care of it?
It's not on the balance sheet at this time. The standard that basically will force that will be in 2015, but we would consider the unfunded portion to be, you know, I don't want to say insignificant, you know, but very easily handled with the policies that are in place going forward for increasing that funding.
Well, 2015 is what, three years out, two years?
Yeah, two fiscal years.
Two years out, so are you saying that we have a good shot at being fully funded by then?
Yes, I think that, I think that basically if things, you know, go like we think they probably will, that the accrual that will have to be made will be, if any, would be almost insignificant, and that is not going to be the case with most cities.
What was the, my memory is fading here just a little bit. You mentioned two items, the debt was what I listened to most carefully.
The assets, fixed assets?
Fixed assets, yeah.
You know, and kind of important to take into consideration there, that with the history of fixed assets, going back before 2003, cities were one of the few entities that basically didn't recognize fixed assets on their balance sheet. And Gatsby 34 changed that. At that point in time, we had what was called a general fixed assets group, and so it was kind of, it was kind of a set of books on fixed assets that was outside of the main one. One of the real challenges, so Gatsby 34 basically changed that to where that was presented more like a business financial statement, where fixed assets are actually on the balance sheet. One of the real challenges is, is that we're keeping, we're basically forced to keep our books on two separate presentation bases, and so the way that the normal operations of the city are basically accounted for is on a budgetary basis, which is really a kind of a cash or modified cash basis. The final audit report, the government-wide audit reports, on a full accrual basis, and under the budgetary basis, we account for a fixed asset, like if we go and buy a police car, we're going to expense that entire amount in the year that it is purchased, but on accrual basis, it shows up on the balance sheet. And so there was, because of the fact that we have, you know, departmentalized budget under New Budget Act and a number of other factors, basically, there was an opportunity for us to properly record that on a budgetary basis, but not pick that up properly on an accrual basis. And we feel like that, for the most part, that has been fixed. You know, that's probably if we had, if we had to basically say what our weakest area of the system was today, that would certainly be it, that there's still some risks that we could not, you know, make that, pick that up like it was supposed to, but we also feel very confident that basically, we're putting the effort in place to basically, you know, to continue to modify those processes.
So you anticipate within the next year that that'll be fixed as well?
I would be extremely surprised and disappointed if it wasn't absolutely perfect next year.
Okay. And when you look at both the accrual and the budgetary process, you know, we have a budgetary process we go through every year, and when you looked at that, how did you feel that all of the individual departments across the city did as far as their budgetary obligations, if you will?
You know, I would really classify, in my personal opinion, kind of above average. The, there's, you know, one of the things that basically creates a real challenge, you know, for a city this size, is you've got some, you've got several of those departments that are not centralized, they're spread out, you know, there's some geographic boundaries. Overall, the approval process was very good. You know, maintaining, if you look at our budget to actual, we had some departments that were, you know, that were a little, you know, underappropriated or overspent. Those were, we didn't feel like that was a problem in terms of, in terms of a breakdown of the process, but kind of, a system that continues to evolve and get a little bit better.
Okay, but you feel like it's more than in control and working well?
Absolutely. Yeah, if I would basically say, you know, make the judgment of the minimum criteria being adequate, we're definitely above being very adequate.
I'm going to interject here. We've far exceeded our time allotted for this particular discussion. Two things, thank you, Mr. McCarron, for your questions. I want to thank you for being here tonight to help clarify some things. I might also add that this, all the information you had just provided us is in print, and we had it there for preparation. I want to thank you for that, and thank our city administration for that, and it's also public information for those that would like to look into it. So, thank you, Darrell, so much. Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. This time, we'll adjourn as YMA reconvenes as Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of December 17th, 2013; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $489,870.64; C, removing the 2007 Ford Expedition VIN number 1FMFU16517LA63071 from surplus and placing it into service for the fleet maintenance department as recommended by the Public Works Director; D, denial of claim number 134008-TW from Susan Zimmerman as recommended by the Oklahomian Municipal Assurance Group; E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for January 21st, 2014, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Most to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Tonight, we have, from our park board, Joe Edwards, chairman.
My name's Joe Edwards, 1124 Camelot Drive, and I am the chairman of the Yukon City Park Board. I'd like to thank the council and the city manager for having us here tonight. I wanted to discuss a little bit about the park board and what we do. First off, we have some other members of the park board that are here. If you guys would stand up when I call your name, D.E. Brower, Joe Baumann, Ed Hatley, and then Ward Larson couldn't be here tonight. Thanks, guys. So, the park board's function is to do several things for the city and do some legwork for the council before some things come before you. We have reinstituted park inspections. We go out, choose a park or facility one month a year, and we all go through and come back and report on it the next month, so we have four or five sets of eyes going through there, reporting back to staff if there's anything that needs to be taken care of. We also approve, well, we recommend approval of certain contracts for certain groups that use our city facilities, stage door, BMX, the RC cars, soccer organizations, girl softball, adult softball, optimist baseball and football. We review those and try to make sure everything's in order, they have their liability insurance, and then we send it on to you guys to recommend, or approve. We also review citizen complaints and any suggestions that come from the city manager or from the staff. Also, try to explain policies and procedures to the citizens and sports groups that do use the parks, and some of us volunteer at special events to judge things like the costume contest at Spooksville or the Hitty Parade at the Freedom Fest, and just go over initial approval of huge special events. We try to cover that and glean as much information as we can before it comes to you guys for approval. So that's a little bit about the park board. And now I'd like to go ahead and speak to the Parks and Rec Department, and I'm really excited about this year. I've been with the park board for about 13 years now, and Yukon is really having some things pop this year for the city parks. You know, we have the new splash pad that's going in over at Sunrise Park, that's going to be something I think that's going to be heavily utilized and possibly, you know, lead to more requests for something like that. And finally, we're taking care of getting the air conditioning at the Cooper Gym, plus having the floor dealt with and the roof. It's going to be a really fine facility when that's done, and those are things we've been working on behind scenes for years. So we're finally seeing some accomplishments. I'd like to go ahead and thank our city manager, Mr. Bottom, for helping reorganize the park department a little bit. We have a park superintendent now, so maintenance is done proactively instead of waiting for a complaint, or waiting for another department to make time to come out and do that. We're seeing a lot of positive things come out of that, so thank you for that, Grayson. We're really lucky here in Yukon to have the Park and Rec Department and all the activities that we do. I know it's real easy to take them for granted, but if you look at a lot of other cities our size, they don't do near the things or have near the programs that our Park and Rec Department have. Just the new brochure came out in the spring, and I was going through it. We offer 30 youth programs, four adult healthy exercise programs, we have nine adult sports leagues, three adult arts programs, and then 23 activities for seniors that run year-round. We have 26 special events every year. Many of them are award-winning events, the Festival of the Child, Taste of Yukon, and I'd like to thank former councilman Hopez for the kind words about Christmas in the park, also the Freedom Fest. You know, this is just a great place to live, and part of that is the fact that, you know, we have a city that is willing to support its parks for its citizens. We also have started trying to write a lot of grants to help pay for some of these things without totally using Yukon dollars. Audrey Fitzsimmons has been a great help in that, and a good example was the forum we had at the start of this meeting to try to get some grants to help improve the trail at Chisholm Trail Park, and also help build a more up-to-date restroom facility at Ranchwood Park, which is utilized by the soccer club quite often. So hopefully, we'll see completion of the splash pad sometime before spring, is what we're shooting for, and that'll be a great thing. Some of the grants that we've written, actually, the splash pad's a good example of that. We got a $100,000 grant, a matching grant to help pay for that, so that was pretty awesome. We've also gotten $30,000 in grants for events in December from the Kirkpatrick Family Fund, and you guys may have seen the signs up around town saying that we're a playful city. We had to go through a lot of hoops to get that kind of designation, but because of that, we received a $1,500 grant from an organization called Kaboom. We're also, we're going to receive a grant that may go to a possible butterfly garden at Freedom Trail, and, you know, it just keeps going on and on. So, another thing I would like to acknowledge is the fact that a lot of this doesn't get done with a lot of hard, without a lot of hard work, and our Park and Rec staff are some of the hardest-working people I know. Now, not everything goes through them. Christmas in the park is a complete citywide push to get that done, and, you know, we appreciate the help with that, but, you know, over the 13 years I've been on the park board, you know, I really have come to appreciate the time and effort that the Park and Rec staff puts in. Hopefully, they get recognized for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item 3, present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year 2012-2013 City of Yukon audited financial report as prepared by Darrell S. White, CPA. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $27,968.68 for the purchase of three fire department and two police department portable radios, and one fire department and three police department vehicle radios from Harris Corporation to be paid from the capital improvement fund as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 5, consider approving supplemental and modification agreement number 1, Piedmont Road, State Highway 4, for right-of-way acquisition in design services with Triad Design Group in the amount of $407,600 to be paid from the capital improvement fund as recommended by the city manager. Do we have a motion? So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Grayson, can you? I thought this project was on hold. Help, give me, remind me the status of this Highway 4 project, and I'll stop there.
The, first of all, the City of Oklahoma City failed to put their portion of the money into the funding formula that they have for streets. They, which, it's all one project number, and because they can't do their half of the road or haven't put it in their budget yet, the actual road construction cannot be let as anticipated, which was actually last year. The, what we have done here is to ask for your approval in letting us, the City of Yukon, do everything that we possibly can up to the point of ODOT approval for right-of-way acquisition, which we haven't received to this point. I do not want to be caught in two ways. Number one, not having Number one, not having done everything that we can do. And this is the last step right before it's time to implement the plan. And secondly, I don't want there to be any excuses of people saying that we didn't do all that we could to make sure that State Highway Four project, which has been discussed, planned for, I am told, up to 25 years, that we are in fact moving forward and doing everything as a city that we possibly can to ensure that the project moves forward. So, again, this money is basically related to right-of-way acquisition and the fees associated there, too. But we can't spend the money until ODOT gives us the go-ahead. But I want this contract to be in place, first of all, so no escalation in price can occur. And then, secondly, so we're ready the minute that they give us the go-ahead, that we can start right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, so nothing's changed. The project is still, is it?
It's on hold.
Still on hold. Okay, but this puts us in the best position to move forward immediately.
What we're saying here, though, is you're actually going to go ahead with some of the acquisition?
No, we cannot, we cannot acquire any right-of-way until ODOT gives us the approval.
Okay, so you're contingent on the approval period?
Absolutely.
Along those lines, I, I mean, maybe I misunderstood previous information, but I thought that this project has been delayed for as much as four years?
Well, completion, possibly four years. Bid letting and construction added together would, would occur probably in the 2016?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're, we're talking about a potentially, potentially two years down the road. What, what assurance do we have as council if we approve this $407,600 that two years from now, that's not going to be $550,000?
Because we're signing a contract.
That's the purpose of this agreement.
That's the purpose. Sign the contract.
Secure the price.
The way the project is set up with ODOT right now, it's really two projects. The first project is State Highway 66 to a little bit past Wilshire. And then, there's the second project from Wilshire to Northwest Expressway.
66, Robbie, or four? State Highway Four.
State Highway 66. State Highway Four, from starting at State Highway 66, going north a little bit past Wilshire.
Okay, so we're, if, if this were to be approved, then our, our ceiling on the right-of-way acquisition cost would be $407,600.
Those are, these are the fees and all of the charges associated with right-of-way acquisition. We will then approve each one of the right-of-way acquisition expenditures as they come before you.
Very good. Thank you.
So, that is in addition to then?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Consider and approve Resolution 2014-01 as a resolution authorizing participation in the Main Street program as designated by the city manager to submit an Oklahoma Main Street Associate application. Do we have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I do. I just would like, again, Grayson, I'm sorry to ask you so many questions tonight, but we had a presentation from Tammy before about the branding. But just help us as a council and the community to understand how this, this Main Street program and the branding and the OU students, how all this ties together? And why staff wants us to pass this?
First of all, Main Street, Oklahoma was an offshoot of the Main Street program across the United States as, as a program of work presented by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. It provides direct assistance very seldom, but it provides technical assistance to the community as well as all of the private individuals and business owners along a designated Main Street thoroughfare, i.e. Main Street Route 66. We think that that technical assistance, when coupled with the OU study and, and planning process that that will cause, as well as the North Star Destination Final Result, which Tammy is going to head up for the city, that those three things added together will be, will be a great way to rejuvenate, to revitalize, to cause some energy to occur on our Main Street along Route 66 here in Yukon. I am particularly familiar with Main Street, as is Larry. Amanda is here from the chamber, who is one of our supporters. And I, I, I think that we always get caught up on the historic preservation part of Main Street. And, and that's natural because it was a program of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. But as it has evolved to the Main Street of today, the economic restructuring is just as vitally important as well. Where we do everything that we can with our existing business owners, property owners as well, to define where gaps exist and where they might be able to take advantage of those gaps. That restructuring is very important. But I think also the, and please, Larry, Amanda, jump in. But I think one of the real things that we derive from this is the leadership development caused through volunteerism along Main Street. You know, volunteering is a great thing, and we all depend on volunteers a lot. But managing volunteers is much like herding cats. And it needs organization. And you got to know how to lead groups of volunteers, because you lead them different than you lead employees. So, that's a third benefit. We believe it to be very useful to Yukon in this particular application because of what we are looking at along our Main Street already. Did I answer?
Yeah, I think so. I think Main Street's headed in a positive direction, and this is another key factor to continue that progress forward.
Absolutely. Well put.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I do have one question, specifically the, the proposed budget. Now, basically, we're looking at a $26,000 expense to the city? Is that how I understand that?
Yes.
And that goes into a fund that goes to fund development efforts or, or, we're talking about technical assistance, basically, things of that nature?
We are going for the associates program, which would require us to have a part-time Main Street manager, if you will, and that money would go to pay for that part-time expense.
So, it's essentially a, a position or a, an additional employee under contract?
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think, once again, too, this is also a, looks like they're, we're just submitting an application at this point.
That's what we're doing.
To look and see what they have. It's not a mandate at this point, I don't think. This is just for the application.
Should we be accepted into the program? You will be presented at some future date, probably in April thereabouts, with a contract for your consideration at that time. Once we approve that contract, we're in the program.
And what additional financial obligations could we expect with the contract?
Nothing beyond our budget.
I don't guess I understand that.
Well, as Councilman Gerba indicated, we have committed to a $26,000 expenditure associated with that budget.
So, if we approve the contract in April?
That would be our financial commitment.
Okay.
Now, anything above that would have to come to you as to expenditures beyond that amount that might exceed my spending authority.
Is that an annual fee, Mr. Bottom?
Yes, it would be. We would anticipate the initial term to be somewhere around three years. What, what the experience has been has, is that these programs mature over time. And many cities that are successful in, in Main Street outgrow the program itself, and it takes on a life of their own. Those communities have run from very small communities, Cordell, Hobart, to very, really pretty good-sized communities. Ponca City, Bartlesville, Miami. So, Stillwater has been a great example. So, we think it, we think it's a good deal.
Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item seven is the city manager's report, and these are information items only.
The fun never stops with our Parks and Recreation Department. I would like to talk to you a little bit about, for the next 30, 31 or two days. First of all, on Saturday, January the 18th, we're going to have the diaper-baby crawl. And since some babies mature automatically upon entering the baby crawl, it also includes a toddler trot to go along with that. Great event. It will be at the Jackie Cooper Gym from six to nine months at 10:30, 10 to 14 months at 11:00. It's a free and prizes will, a free event and prizes will be awarded. On Monday, January the 20th, kids' annual free throw contest, also at the Jackie Cooper Gym. The floor repair at the Jackie Cooper Gym does not begin, Quincy tells me, until after this particular event. So, we will have a kids' free throw contest. Boys and girls ages six through 13 shoot 20 free throws. By the way, the two winners at the community, the one at the community center and the one at the Jackie Cooper Gym, they then have a playoff at a Yukon High School basketball game. And then, most importantly, and we'll probably have to create a cheer squad for this, the winner of that one will then go and take on Mustang in a free throw shooting contest later in February. Also, one of the most successful events that we have, really in the, in the late winter, is the daddy-daughter dance. You know, this started out as one little dance that we had at the DRC. Then, for the last couple of years, we have had two dances. And now, we're up to three dances with limited tickets for each one of them, because each year it continues to grow. It's a great event. I'm taking my granddaughter. I know her dad thinks he's going, too, but I'm taking my granddaughters, and we're going to the daddy-daughter dance. So, that will be on Saturday, February the 1st. Four to eight-year-olds from 3:00 to 4:30, or 5:00 to 6:30, and then ages nine to 12 at 7:00 to 8:30. So, if you've got small children, or if you, like me, have granddaughters, several granddaughters, please join us for the daddy-daughter, daughter dance. Mayor, that's it on the events, project report. I handed out to you this evening in your packet. You will notice several project reports. You have, over the last several months, approved expenditures of funds for street repairs, line bursting, striping, numerous other kinds of infrastructure improvements that we have. Weather has not been our friend over the last month, but many of those are start, you can actually, when you, when you're headed west on 10th and you're approaching Garth Brooks, you can actually see where the lanes are and where the stop bars are. That project is moving along, but the wind has, has held us up. We still have some more striping to do. Please make yourself aware of where we're doing this. I can also tell you that the line bursting that we've been doing across town has been held up by cold weather. And I, I really, DEQ bragged on us about our, I can't imagine DEQ bragging on us, but DEQ bragged on us as it relates to our line bursting efforts, indicating that no other city in the state of Oklahoma was doing as much to improve their sewer lines as the City of Yukon. And coming from DEQ, that was, that was high praise. I, as Tammy talked about, or Joe talked about also, we've been approved as a merit winner for the Certified Healthy Cities Grant Process, and we'll be submitting those applications over the, over the next 12 months, getting all of our information together and making sure that we present a strong application for another grant, similar probably to what we did with the solar-powered driver feedback speed signs that you see at Skyview and Sheedak, I believe it was the other one that we did. So, with that portion, I think that we will be done, and I'll stand ready to answer your questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bottom? From the council?
Oh, I, I might also point out, Christmas in the Park, in spite of ice, in spite of dangerous driving conditions, walking conditions, we did over 40,000 cars. We had one night where there was over 5,000 walkers that viewed the lights. And there's no way to count how many helicopter rides were sold to walk, to go and view the lights from the air, as well as airplanes. A great event. We're glad to host it, and with your continued support, we will continue to do it.
Thank you. Do we now have any questions for the city manager? No questions. Item eight, new business.
Done this evening, Mayor.
Seeing none, we'll go on to item nine, council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I could, I'm going to leave a few things left for everybody else, but I mean, there's.
You too, that's all you.
I could, well, Ken's going to cut, Ken's going to cut me off in a couple minutes. So, it'll be okay. I just want to say.
Clock's running, Mike.
Hang in there. You may, could get lucky. I want to say a shout-out to Tammy, all the work she did. Presentation that we saw earlier this evening is going to manifest itself in all of the things that a lot of our community sees in the future. It really looks like a big step forward. I was very dubious about it initially, but I think it's come to pass that it's, it's turned out to be a pretty good thing in, in the, in the branding process. Once again, I, I enjoyed Christmas in the Park as well. I even went through twice. I also want to thank Grayson for the Public Works Improvements Reports. It's something we had requested. Arnold, his staff has been doing a really outstanding job. I mean, I used to get a couple of calls a week on streets and stuff, and I hardly get any calls now in regard to streets. It's, it's, it's a pretty good thing. And Bill, that must mean you guys are doing pretty good, too, because, you know, I've not had very many about the sanitation trucks running over anybody's yard. I do want to thank, special thanks to Darrell tonight. I know I asked some questions and took a little bit, took a little time there and everything else, but those, to me, were very important issues. I really appreciate the audit that you, that you gave to it. I was actually able to read most of it this year. So, there were still some questions I had about a few things. And once again, I want to thank Joe for coming up tonight from the park board. I appreciate that as well. With that? well. With that, Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Gerba?
All the thunder has been stolen. Thank you.
No, no.
No, I just want to piggyback.
That playing downtown.
I want to piggyback. You notice that? No, I just want to piggyback. Basically, thank, uh, Mr. White, uh, uh, Grayson, and all the department heads for the, uh, financial report and the audit, the fact that it worked really well. You know, a city this size, with the amount of lines of, of accounting that you have to account for and the things that you have to do properly on all these, on, on all your, uh, financial reports, the fact that there were no findings, no major issues, I think is huge. So, congratulations to everybody, and thanks for all your hard work on that. Um, speaking of hard work, too, thanks, thanks to Joe for all your years of, uh, service to the city. Thirteen years is a long time, and you've seen the, the Parks and the Rec Department grow quite a bit and do some amazing things, so. Well, you're doing such a great job, we can't let you go.
Yeah.
Thanks again. Um, and last but not least, uh, also with the Yukon branding project, Tammy did a phenomenal job. And, and, um, as I think some of the other council members, I was kind of, dubious was the right word, because we were thinking, is this really going to bear fruit? And the more we see about it, the more exciting it is. And, and the more you can really see that this is going to pay huge dividends to the city. So, um, well done. And, um, the, the city's taken off, and, uh, get on. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gerba. Ms. Yanda?
Well, I just want to thank all those responsible for, uh, Christmas in the park. It was an outstanding event, and it brings a lot of people to Yukon. And I just think it's a wonderful thing for our city, and I hope we continue it and continue, can you, continue to grow it for many years. Um, I want to thank Tammy for her report. It was an excellent report, and I'm excited about, uh, all the things that it's going to, um, do for the City of Yukon. And I'm looking for, looking forward to 2014 and all the things that are in store for Yukon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alberts?
Well, I guess we'll be a little repetitive tonight, but I think that it, first of all, thank you for the Park Board. I think it's the best board to serve on, because I did that myself, and I really enjoy it. And it's just a lot of fun. And it is, it's a great part of our city and brings so much pleasure, not only to our citizens, but people who think that Yukon is their city. They live in our zip code, they live south of the interstate, they live in Surrey Hills, they've got a 73099 zip code, and they come and they call us home. But they shop here, and they benefit, and they're part of our community. And I think that it's important, and that's a great way to give back to those people that come here and shop. And I think that you all should be commended on a great job that you do. The audit, I, I think that it's, it's important to understand that the city's a business, and it needs to run, it needs to run well, and it needs to run successfully. And when I first came, we didn't have a, we didn't have much of a rainy day fund. Uh, we have since mended that problem. Uh, we've had financial issues, and it's, it's exciting now, over several years, to see that we are in great financial shape. And thank you to the city, all the, all the staff, and everyone that worked so hard to make this machine run finely tuned. And I think that that's, that is important, and that the citizens, we're the stewards. I guess what I'm trying to say is, is we're the stewards of the city's money. And I think that the community should feel confident, and the staff, that, that the city has put together with the city manager and the assistant city manager, they're doing a great job. They're being great stewards of your money, and you're getting a lot of return on your investment. And thank you for the wonderful report with the audit. As far as the branding, too, I, I have always been a, a fan of the branding. And I think that, um, Yukon, as we move forward, it, I, I'm not a big person for change. And I think change is always difficult. And it's a great place. I, I came back home to live here and, and be part of this community. But as we go forward, you've got to have a vision. And like Rick says, it's a great place, Rick, but we need to make it even better. And 2013 was a great year, and the neat thing is, is 2014 can even be a better year, with the vision of these people and the vision of the people out here that you see, and the other people that you see riding around, and the Yukon's best vehicles. But it didn't stop there. It's the community. And I, and I've said this, I said it when I was sitting over there, we're kin-setting, but I mean it. In order for this to be a good year, we need the input from the community. I hear grumbling from time to time, and there are some issues right now that are being kicked around the coffee shop. But in order for that to come to fruition, for that to be resolved, for that to be addressed, you need to come here and stand at the podium, or call me, or call one of these other people, and share it with us. Let us know what's going on in the community. How can we change things? Why do we have a new office on Main Street? Is it really worth that $26,000 investment? Well, it just got a 5-0 vote tonight, so call one of us and ask, why did we spend $26,000? I hate to wear Grayson out. Call Grayson and talk to him. We're spending your money. We think it's a good investment, and I think that any of us are happy to talk to you about that investment. But if we've done something wrong, if there's an issue, if there's something needs to be changed, if there's something that we're not addressing, then we need to know about it. Because I want 2014, and I know all these people here want 2014 to be the best year ever. I mean, we're putting it on our water tower, on our trucks, on signs, and sending it everywhere. But the only way it's going to be that good is if we hear from the community, because you all out there in the community are who will make this year and this community not only the best year ever, but the best place to live ever. It'd be a great place to live, wouldn't it, Rick?
Amen!
Amen, brother. That's all, am I out of time, Ken?
You're out of time. The gavel's in hand, brother. No.
Oh, I'm happy about the Healthy Cities, too. Sorry.
That's awesome. I'm going to say something that many of you have never heard me say, and, uh, few of you will ever hear me say again, but I was wrong. I was wrong about the branding. I voted against spending the money on that study. I felt like we were being redundant in the dollars that we spent. And by the time that final report came out that was presented to us, um, it was, it was a fraction. That investment was a fraction of the return that we're going to receive as a result of the time and money that went into it. So, write this day down. And the, the only other thing I will say regarding the, uh, the audit, has a lot more to do with our city than the, uh, audit itself. Um, with the efficiency that our city is being run, and the transparency in the way that the money is being spent and held, um, I'm just, I'm just very, very proud of the administration that we have here in the city. And, um, everything that was discussed tonight and everything, uh, that you would want to know about this city's, uh, budget is public record, and I invite you to, uh, check it out if you have any doubts. But we're in, uh, we're on solid footing, and it's a result of our city manager, assistant city manager, and, uh, every department head that we have. So, that being said, I want to thank all of you that were involved, and we will stand adjourned.